Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting of the DeKalb City Council, August 12, 2019. I'd ask City Clerk Lynn Physikas to call the roll, please.
Morris.
Here.
Finukin.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Fagan.
Here.
McAdams.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda for the Committee of the Whole Meeting. We have two considerations tonight. Are there any additions or deletions? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Finukin, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Finukin.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Fagan.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Aye, aye.
Item C on the agenda is public participation, and as anyone who is in the audience tonight may know, anyone is welcome to speak to any item on this agenda, or any item on -- not on the agenda for that matter. If you would like to do that, please fill out a speaker request form, kindly give it to our City Clerk Lynn Physikas. She'll get it to me, and we'll try to get you on in the proper order. Again, for those of you who would like to speak, you may speak to either this -- to any item on the agenda, either at this point, or when we get to that consideration. I've got two people who would like to speak. Dave Colars would like to talk about the website refresh, and Dwayne Brown has signed up to speak on the adult use of cannabis. Would you gentlemen, either of you gentlemen, like to speak now, or would you like to wait until we get to the item on the agenda?
I'll speak now.
Okay. Dwayne Brown would like to speak on the adult use of cannabis. Dwayne?
Dwayne Brown, Fourth Ward. The state of Illinois is expecting between $500 million and $1 billion off the sale of legal cannabis when it goes into effect effectively June 1, 2020. We need to be prepared. We want our share -- our share of the sales taxes. We want plenty of dispensaries. Look at Colorado for an example. We want to get our share off of it. Don't do like we did on the gaming, where you have a cap on establishments, and you have interested parties wanting in, and the cap is full. Let the free market decide. There's too much regulation in the city of DeKalb. I don't care if it's liquor stores, if it's video gaming, let the free market determine it. It does a better job than the city, I'll say that right now. There's a 3% tax you can impose on it, but let's make sure we have the establishments. Let's don't put the tax too high. Let's see what the suburbs are. We can always raise it later if need be. We have a market here, and let's be honest, NIU, and most of the students travel from the Chicago area, and they're going to get their cannabis on the way here. If not here, we need to be competitive. The -- I mean, it should have happened 20 years ago. I mean, it's ridiculous. We're a non-progressive state, and we're finally moving into the modern era. So let's be prepared. It's in its infancy, but let's not put any cap on the establishments. Let's -- of course, there's going to be regulations. There's always regulation on this type of enterprise, but let's take it slowly, and let's capitalize on this. We need the revenue. We have fire and police pensions to pay. We have deficits on those. What is it, $78 million deficit just on the fire and police? We need to start lowering these. This is one way to do it. So let's be cautious on this. Let's take it one step at a time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne, and we are going to be discussing some of those very points that you have raised, I'm sure, during this meeting. I'm going to assume then, DK, that you'd like to speak when we get to that item on the agenda. Okay. Those are the only two folks who have indicated they'd like to speak under public participation, so let's move to the first consideration, and that is the website refresh. And I'm going to ask City Manager Bill Nicholas to speak to this item, please.
I'm going to very quickly yield to our Assistant City Manager Ray Munch. I'm just going to remind the council that back in 2018, the administration announced to the community that there would be a refresh in 2019, and that the public would be involved and would be surveyed about what they like and don't like, and as well as the internal users of our website. And a number of things have happened, and Ray Munch is here to tell us where we stand now.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, community and staff. So as Mr. Nicholas mentioned, in the fall of 2018, staff brought to council the idea that our website was due for a refresh or a minor redesign. That refresh was something that was built into the original agreement when Civic Plus was brought on to build the current version of our city website. So essentially, in the fifth year of that agreement, the city was granted a no-cost, basic redesign of the existing website. What that means is really the scope is somewhat limited, so you're talking about a visual redesign and some basic cleanup of the existing website. This is not a new website build from the ground up, so again, there are some limitations on what could and could not be done as part of this project. But before we really jumped into anything, we did want to get public feedback. So over the years since we've established this Civic Plus website, we've heard a lot of feedback from the community, both positive and negative. There are things that people really enjoy about the city's website, and there are some challenges that people find when they use the website on a daily basis. So we did several things. First, we developed an online survey that was made available to the community. That was launched in October of 2018, and was available through the end of the year. Fifty-three people responded to that survey. It asked simple yes, no, or multiple choice questions, and also gave people the ability to free-form their answers and provide candid feedback on the current website and what they like or dislike about the website. In addition, in October and November of 2018, staff hosted four public forums. They were fairly small in size. They turned into somewhat focus group-type forums, if you will. We had four forums. We held those at different days of the week and times of the day, both during the day and in the evening, and we spread those out amongst different locations in the city. So we did several at City Hall, one at the library, and one in the community room at Hopkins Park. So we wanted to make it available and accessible to people throughout the community. Again, attendance was limited at that. Amongst the four meetings, we only had seven attendees in total, but there was a lot of feedback gathered from those people who did attend. The other thing that we did was we took this discussion to all of our boards, committees, and commissions. So a lot of our boards and commissions had very valuable input, as you can imagine. The Economic Development Commission is very invested in the website and how it portrays business development opportunities and things like that to existing or future businesses. We spoke to the Human Relations Commission about how -- what they would like to see in the website as it relates to reaching different parts of the community and things like that. So we gathered an immense amount of feedback during that time, and during the months of January through March of 2019, we compiled that feedback and started to do some early work on the existing website. What we really learned was that throughout this process, some of the things that people were identifying about the existing website that were problematic really have nothing to do with Civic Plus or its platform. There are issues that have been created over the years, frankly, by staff, because this is a staff-driven website. It's maintained on a daily basis by the staff, not by Civic Plus. And over the years, as you can imagine, people create pages, they post information, and sometimes it's not done according to best practice. So during this three-month period, staff worked diligently to sort of clean up the current website. I want to tip my hat to Jason Blumenthal and our former management intern, Walker Steinke. They did exhaustive work on this. At one point, I walked behind Jason's desk, and he had an Excel spreadsheet going, and I asked, "What are you doing?" And he was going through every single page on the website, noting errors on every individual page. And our webpage is several hundred pages long. So again, an exhaustive effort. We fixed broken links, identified obsolete pages and information, and we also put additional staff through training. With staff turnover, people become unfamiliar with the website and how it works, and what they should be doing to maintain their pages on a daily basis. So we wanted to bring people back up to speed on that. So once we worked our way through that process, which I should mention is still ongoing, it's something that will always be ongoing. We started our actual work with Civic Plus. So in April, we had our first conference call with Civic Plus and started to do some of the question and answer that's required for them to get an understanding of what the city wants to see in this process. And by May, we had gotten into some early pre-design work. So Civic Plus asked for examples of our branding, the city logos. If anyone has not heard this before, I'd be shocked, but one of the major points of contention with the city website currently is the logo at the top is not the official city logo. So it was important to have the right branding, the right logo designs, high-quality photos. That's some of the work that we were doing behind the scenes. So once we were able to provide all the information to Civic Plus, they started to do some work on their end. And what they did was they gave us exemplar websites. So Civic Plus is one of the top website providers for local government in the United States of America. There are literally hundreds of websites that we could have chosen from to use as examples. Not that we want to mirror another municipality's website, but gather ideas of what different parts of a website might look like and might work well for DeKalb. So in doing so, staff started to kind of put together what we think a good design might look like. And some of that was done during our public participation periods, where people from the public were invited to look at these different websites as well. And what we came up with was sort of an idea for the different modules that you'd like to see on the homepage based on public feedback. And Civic Plus put together what's called a mood board, and it was nothing more than a black-and-white screen saying there's a calendar here, and a news flash here, and some icons here, and it really didn't tell you much, but it gave us an idea of what we were working with and how it might all come together. So once we approved that, we got into the actual design phase where they were taking the photographs, the branding, the colors that we had provided them, and they're putting the wheels into motion on actual design work. What we're going to show you tonight are actually JPGs. So no work has been done to actually start building the webpage. They did graphic design and put them in JPG format, so you're looking at a static image when I turn it over in a second here, so there's nothing to click on, it's not interactive. But it'll give you a really good idea of what things might look like as we move forward. Again, the scope of this project is such that we've gotten to a point where Civic Plus is looking for approval on this design. We're still at a point where changes can be made. Again, some of those changes need to stay within the scope of the project. Some of the feedback we heard from the community was they wanted drastic changes to things like the quality of the search functionality and things like that, and that's something that really we have no control over in terms of this project. Again, that's something that we need to work on day-to-day when we build a page. We need to be putting in better keywords and things like that, so when somebody puts something in a search function, it hits on what they're actually looking for. So again, that's a staff responsibility to be working on now and in the future. But at any point, I think what they've provided us, it looks night and day from what we currently have. It looks much better, in my opinion. I hope you agree. But tonight, what we're looking for is a little bit of feedback on what they've presented, what changes you might like to suggest, or might like to have staff suggest to Civic Plus at this point. So Jeff, if you would, switch it over so I can take control here. I'll show you what we have so far. Again, I have three different JPGs to show you. One will be the homepage and what that will look like. Then there's a design of the homepage with a menu expanded, and then we'll show you what they've mocked up for an interior webpage. Jeff tells me there's a little bit of a delay, so hopefully. There we go. So as you can see right now, I'm on our current city of DeKalb webpage. And what you basically have on this webpage at the top, we have the scrolling banner bar, you have some graphic buttons, and then it starts to get pretty cluttered pretty quickly. You have lists of links, city news, calendar down the side, the Facebook page is embedded. So what we aim for is a much cleaner look, and this is what they've brought forward as their initial design proposal. I'll point out a couple of things as I scroll through this site. The first of which is that top bar, where you see the city of DeKalb logo, and in the green you have the menu headers of government, living here, business development, how do I? You also have your search function off to the right there. That top bar is designed so that it will stay static the entire time you're scrolling through the homepage. So any time if you get to the middle of the homepage, and now you're looking at a calendar, but you want to jump straight to a menu, it's always there at the top of the page. So it reduces the amount of scrolling up and down on the homepage. From there, I'd like to point out the buttons on the left-hand side of the page. You see three buttons, home, airport, and transportation. Those buttons exist for one simple reason. We will ultimately have two sub-pages of the city's webpage. One already exists in the airport. So the airport has its own, what's referred to as a department page, whereas our police and fire departments, public works, don't have their own page that's built out with its own homepage and all the accessories that go with that. They're just sub-pages in the website. The airport maintains its own page, so we want it quickly accessible from the homepage, so that's accomplished through this button on the side. With the consolidation of our transit efforts, we found it important that we do the same thing with the transit site, and Marcus Cox had actually budgeted this year through our grant funding to create a webpage. So what better way to do it than through our existing platform with the city website now that we've spearheaded those transportation efforts? So we'd like to do that in a similar format to the airport, so you could quickly get from the main city homepage to the airport page to the transit page, and back and forth between any of those very quickly. What you see in the middle of the page is a much cleaner, crisper graphic representation of the city. So here, we have displayed a classic picture of the NIU campus. This can be set up a number of different ways. We gave Civic Plus a number of high-quality JPGs that can be used there, and these can scroll. So a JPG stays in the middle of the page for a few seconds, and then it changes, or they can set it up so that every time you return to the page, it's a different picture. But the goal here is to get very high-quality photos displayed on the website. Below the photography, you again see that we have these graphic icon buttons, but what we've tried to do is enhance those a little bit by putting some more words underneath the buttons, so you get a better understanding of what those buttons actually take you to. And those buttons can be changed at any point in time. Right now, we have them set to hit on the pages that are most frequently viewed on the website, and that's based on analytics that we get from the backend of the website. So these are some of the pages that are used most frequently by the public. Then you scroll down, and you get into a carousel of news and events. So currently, we sort of have two different sections on our homepage that serve this purpose. One is that large banner at the very top of the homepage of the website. And that's great, but one of the things I'd like to point out is that banner is very labor-intensive. Those banners are put together by IT staff in Adobe Photoshop and sometimes take an incredible amount of time. So we also have just the news flash on the bottom of the website where it's narrative, text-only type of news stories. So we'd like to combine the two into this carousel, where you still have high-quality pictures with your news stories, but it's just a single picture that you can drop into a story, and it populates on the homepage. Again, it'll reduce staff time and resources. Again, you can see that there's, again, high-quality photos embedded in the background in these different parts of the webpage, so we're trying to really highlight the city, downtown, NIU, different parts of the community that we want to showcase. And these pictures, these are pictures that we had on hand, but at any point in time, we can get a picture from a special event, or put seasonal pictures up and change those out whenever we feel is appropriate. Here you have the updated calendar function. So as you can see, the calendar is much more prominent than the little sidebar that we have currently on our existing homepage. It's very crisp and clean, in my opinion. It's easy to read, and it has two simple tabs, meetings and events. So currently, if you're on the backend of our website, there's about 13 different categories of calendars that you can put in, and if we reduce that, it'll be a little bit clearer. So meetings are public meetings of either the city council or our boards and commissions, and events could be things like ward meetings, a police or fire national night out event, things of that nature. So just simplify it a little bit, but it's -- the calendar has a bigger footprint on the homepage, so that people can get more information more quickly. Scrolling down from there, this is simply a section on the website where people can subscribe to or view the city's e-newsletter, and then at the bottom, we get into the footer of the page where, again, it's contact information for the city, some of the quick links that currently exist on the homepage, just in a smaller format. And again, this is another section of helpful links. It could be frequently asked questions, or department pages that are frequently visited. And then lastly, you have this connect with the city. So these are all the icons that will be linked to the various social media pages for the city. The other pages I'll show you, I'm going to jump to really quick because it's essentially the same thing, but what this version shows you is what the menu would look like when you expand that top menu. It's referred to as a mega-menu. It looks very similar to what we have now, just representing it in terms of what it would look like in terms of color and text. And then this would be your interior page. Again, not unlike current interior pages on the website, but again, we tried to stick with much cleaner and crisper color palettes. Right now, you have sort of that beige background on the website, and we went to a nice crisp, clean white. So, you know, we can discuss if there's preferences about colors and things like that. This menu on the side, you can see there's like five different shades of green. In most cases, we would not see that on our website. They're just showing you how the color variance comes in when you go into different sub-menus and things like that. For the most part, our interior pages have one sub-menu and don't go much deeper than that, so it's rare that we would see color upon color upon color on an interior page, but that's what you would see if you had multiple tiers of sub-pages. So with that, I'd be happy to hear your feedback, answer any questions that you have, and hope that we can take that feedback and move forward with this.
Good. Thank you, Ray. We have one individual who would like to speak to this item on our agenda, and that is Dave Colars. DK?
Well, thank you, Mayor, Mayor and Council. I ran into the mayor at the electric vehicle event over in Huntley Park and had a suggestion. He suggested I bring it here. I'm a former IT guy, and a website should give people information. They should be able to find out what they need. The appearance obviously is nice. You want to be able to be able to find things. And one of the ideas I've had for a long time, I used to own a restaurant and a club many years ago here in DeKalb, and it would be nice if there was a link on the homepage that -- or a link that opened a page that linked to all the events going on in the city. I asked Jerry, I said, "If you went to a new town to visit and you had a couple of days to go, where would you go to find out what was going on in town? You went to Schenectady for two days." And he said, and I agree, "You'd go to the city's webpage to find out what is going on in the city." And I often find out about events that I was not able to find out about from friends who happened to see them. But if there was a page on the city's website where you could click and it would open to every other entity's links, so you would know if there were music events, if there were children events, if there were weekly, monthly, yearly events, it could all be listed on one page, not just for visitors, but for residents, too. And then you would have a listing of, and it would be on the people who owned those businesses to keep their websites current, of course. But it would be nice to be able to have an idea of what is going on in town, help get people in, and when they're here, maybe they could spend some money and have a good time. Thank you.
Thank you, DK. Ray, would you like to address DK's point, or do you want to open it up for conversation?
I most certainly can. So that is something that we've talked about quite a bit over the past several months, and if I'm being quite honest, that's a point of frustration for staff as much as it is the public. There's frequently events that we see on a Friday afternoon that we were simply not aware of, as far as the people who run the city's social media accounts and the website. And, you know, our reaction is, boy, I would have loved to have shared that on social media or put it on the website. And so a lot of that is a communication issue and not a technology issue. And so I think that is, you know, something that we can improve on, working with our different partners throughout the community, whether it's the Chamber of Commerce, or, you know, probably DeKalb, NIU, you name it. But again, I think that's a communication issue more than it is a technology issue. Can I create a page on the website where all those event calendars from different entities are linked? Absolutely. That's the easy part. But for us to put them front and center, where it's easy to find, we have to know about them. So...
Yeah. We had chatted about that, I know, at Economic Development Commission meeting one day, and what we were talking about is, you know, let's link to the chamber events, let's link to the NIU events, let's link to the Daily Chronicles page, for example. They have a big listing each and every week, either on the midweek or the Daily Chronicle, and I realize that we're never going to catch everything, you know, but I think the point of linking seems to be the way to do it. And what we need to do, then, is to get folks who are interested and will use our city website can look at our city website as the place where you can launch, if you will, your questions regarding what the events are. So that's good. Let's open it up for city council questions and answers, and again, this is a work in progress, and I really appreciate all the work, Ray, that you and Jason Blumenthal have done. Alderman Morris.
I think the first thing that -- this is gorgeous, by the way. I love the way it looks. I think it's really aesthetically appealing. I think the first thing that comes to mind with a community calendar, and I know we had talked about this in the past, too, is just how labor-intensive that could be. I think one city that I lived in at a time had a spot where people could go and input their event themselves, and then the city could just check off and approve it. So maybe something like that would take all the extra work out of it, and then people are, you know, left to their own interests to put it on the calendar.
Yeah, I think that's something that we can explore. I know there's different functionality to the website where people can create an account and submit information through various means, so we could look into that and explore those possibilities.
Good idea. Any other thoughts or questions? Alderman Favor.
As long as we're still talking the calendar. One of the thoughts is potentially taking, I don't like the current calendar today. I've signed up, and I get 13 different calendars going to my Google account or whatever, so I have all of those. It could be something, again, as simple as aggregating all the different local communities or getting permission from the local media to get a feed from there, you know, once a week or whatever, to aggregate all those together and have them on the site. I think there's opportunities. We just -- what's going to be the easiest and least, you know, manpower-driven.
Absolutely.
Alderman Verbic?
And when I think about our website, I think customer service. So someone wants to open a business, maybe four steps to opening a business in DeKalb, or perhaps our code enforcement challenges, that they have a spot that they can go to to show pictures and challenges with particular properties, for example. You know, how can we better serve the customer more efficiently with our website is what I'm looking for.
And I like that opener up there on the ribbon above, "How do I?" And I like that, that opener up there on the ribbon above, "How do I, you know, how do I get a permit? How do I do this?" You know, and, and I take it that that is what that is designed for.
Correct. When you open that up, and that exists on our current website, it's, "How do I apply for a job, get a permit?" Absolutely.
But I like it right up there on top. Alderman Smith.
Ray, I think I'm going to answer my own questions. ADA accessible, that's always a hot topic, but you guys did a great job, because, especially with that group that oversees the page, that, those are great numbers, and I want people to be aware of it, that that's really hard. Where I work now, we're going through that now, that, that's hard. Good job on that one.
Thank you.
How about a continual refresh? I know I'm thinking ahead, that's me. We get to this point, are we looking ahead any further? Changes, you know, because honest, websites become stagnant, people don't want to visit them. I mean, that's a pet peeve of mine, but something that's changing always means something's, somebody's always digging further into the site to get more information. So I'm going through my list of questions, so what else do I have? That's pretty much it. If you want to answer the whole, maybe you can help out.
So I think that's a fair point, and one of the things that we've talked about at the staff level is, how do we keep this website visually appealing? Because it is always changing. So some of these things are always going to be institutions in DeKalb, NIU, the downtown. But frankly, a few years, or even months ago, you might not have wanted to focus on downtown as prominently as you do right now. You know, there's exciting things happening that, you know, are aesthetically pleasing, and you might want them to be front and center, where, as in the past, you know, that might not have been the case. So we do have the ability to constantly refresh the look kind of behind the scenes of what you're seeing here, but in terms of a full-scale refresh, like what we're doing right now, that's not included in our agreement. Once you move past that five-year mark, we're kind of on a whim, if you will.
Paul, question, how often do they recommend? You know?
I don't know. That's a good question, but I can find an answer out for you.
No problem. Thank you.
Alderman, favor.
Is there a plan to, as you've done, and Jason has gone through and reviewed the pages, is there a plan to do that annually, to go in and try and, I guess, delete the dead links and dead pages?
Absolutely. So one of the things that's interesting in our organization is, we've decentralized our website. So in a lot of municipalities, they either have an IT department, or a communications department, that maintains the website on a daily basis. Just from a time and resources perspective, we really don't have that luxury, so we've decentralized our model to where we have staff representatives in every department. So there might be an admin assistant in the fire department, who's responsible for maintaining all those fire department pages. And even that is a tall task for many departments. So we have sort of made it a priority to put a key team in place and keep that together, to be reviewing these things from a higher level, and to be communicating with the departments on a more frequent basis about the changes we'd like them to make in their pages, and, you know, updates and new information.
I appreciate you giving us this update. Unless there are any other questions, I'm going to just say thank you. Let's keep this before the public, before the council, and as we are ready to roll this thing out, we want to make sure that we publicize that. David, thanks for your, your comments tonight, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move along now to item number two on our consideration, our last consideration for the Committee of the Whole meeting tonight, and that is the adult use of cannabis in DeKalb. Bill Nicholas.
Thank you, Mayor. We have about fifteen minutes to cover this topic. I'm going to go over just the, the high points of the, of the, of the ingredients that I think we should take our time and go through, that will be the council's lead, and suggest a, a couple of general points that you might want to express your opinion on tonight, so we know, are we proceeding, or are we not? And if we are proceeding, can we do so in regular meetings, its considerations, or in Committee of the Whole meetings and so forth? So, as you know, from the pretty lengthy background here, we're, what we're talking about is the, the new scene in state regulations affecting cannabis. We have had adult use for a while now, for medicinal purposes, and now, as a result of the Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act, that was, was signed into law on June 25th, the private consumption and possession of cannabis for Illinois residents over twenty-one years of age is now the law of the land. So what do we need to attend to at our local level? Because a lot of things, as you know from the background, which I'm not going to repeat, are controlled at the state level. Well, there are a couple I'll just highlight tonight, and there is an exhibit, Jeff, you got it up, thank you very much, that I'd like you to attend to in just a moment. One of those things that we can impose a preference on has to do with zoning. We may not ban, if we had a pre-existing medical cannabis dispensary in DeKalb, and we don't, we wouldn't be able to, to ban such existing businesses going forward. We can significantly limit the location, and also the number. And this gets to Mr. Brown's point, and that is something you'll want to look at. Do we want to put a cap on the number, or not? And that's something that would be a matter for future discussion. In addition, we can allow certain types of cannabis establishments, and as you know, there are different, this isn't just a dispensary option, there are also processing types of establishments that are allowed, and at the local level, and infuser establishments or facilities, cultivation centers, and the like. So there's a lot of meat to grapple with, just on that point. And then finally, if, if we are thinking about allowing these establishments in the city of DeKalb, what zoning districts do we want to allow them in? Do we want them in all general commercial zoning districts? Do we want them in neighborhood commercial districts? We can't have them in residential districts. Do we want to set up parameters for how close they can be to schools and churches? And do we want to be able to put them close by, or separated some distance from establishments that sell tobacco, as an example? So I'll come back to that point in just a couple of minutes. I'm sorry for the, the lack of time here. Tax revenue, and it's another thing Mr. Brown touched on, is, is something that we also need to attend to. We can impose up to a three percent tax on all persons engaged in the selling of cannabis at retail, and we could do so at quarter percent interval. So we could start with a half, a one, a one and a half, two, two and a half, three, and so forth. That, that is a detail that we will need to eventually get to, if the council consensus is that we should consider embracing the adult use in, in the city of DeKalb through licensed establishments. The, I should also just say that the clock is ticking, in a way, and again, Mr. Brown hit that on the head. The Illinois Municipal League has, has speculated that if we are interested in pursuing this, we should be thinking about that level of tax that we would be wanting to impose, if we want to be able to collect that tax before June 1st of 2020. Of course, that's, that's begging a lot of other questions. Let me just dance forward to a couple of last things here. And not for tonight's discussion necessarily, but there are still areas of the law that will need to be worked out in the veto session this fall. And the Department of Revenue and the Department of Insurance have, have agreed that there needs to be detailed, particularly in the area of labor management relations, or the part of the law that touches on what employees can do or cannot do, and levels of cannabis, and not of cannabis, but of the H, am I thinking H-E? Can't think of the acronym.
THD.
THD, thank you. In, in the bloodstream. As an example, if we have zero tolerance for our firefighters and police officers, and maybe for CDL drivers in the Public Works Department, while they are working, that can be pretty easily enforced. But when these same employees are away, save for a two-week family vacation, and there was some cannabis use, residue will remain in the bloodstream for a week or two. And if, if people come in with just a trace, not, not that they have surpassed the legal limit, is that something that will lead to an immediate reaction on the part of the employer? These are things, at the administrative level, we will need to think about, and then bring to you for your advice and consent. So what I'd like to pose, in the limited time we have left, and I think you want to have a brief break before the regular meeting, is that we first deal with the question, is the city of DeKalb interested, is the government of the city of DeKalb interested in either welcoming, or at least accepting, adult use for persons over the age of twenty-one?
Good. Let me just make a couple of comments, and then I do realize that we are not going to make a final decision tonight on adult use of cannabis in the city of DeKalb. However, having said that, it was over a year ago, or almost a year, that I attended a meeting with a number of suburban mayors, and Kelly Cassidy and Heather Steames, two legislators, who led the way when Governor Pritzker had announced very openly and clearly over a year ago, that he felt that the adult use of cannabis legislation is something that he was going to endorse and push through. So it wasn't a matter of, I think, if this was going to pass the Illinois Legislature, it was just a question of when. At that time, I think it was very important to me, and I reached out to Jeff Keiker, our representative, and I said, "We need to stay ahead of this thing." About a, what, three weeks ago, four weeks ago, Kurt Lang and I hosted a meeting of area law enforcement officials, the state's attorney was there, and others, and we simply said, "Hey, let's stay ahead of this thing, as we, as municipalities, decide whether or not the recreational use of cannabis, not so much its usage, but more than that, its dispensing, if you will, makes sense for our communities." Already, one major community in the state of Illinois, Morton, has voted, their city council has said, "We do not want cannabis to be sold in the city of Morton." They've passed that already. I know that Naperville, a major municipality, has discussed this. I don't know where they are along, but the point is, we want to stay ahead of it, and I think that's what we're trying to do tonight. Our city manager is simply trying to get a clear, excuse me, a consensus on whether or not this city council feels that dispensing cannabis for the recreational use for our citizens makes sense for this city. And with those comments, I will turn it over to anybody who has any comments or questions. Alderman Fagan.
I've had one person reach out to me, and is concerned that they do not want us to be able to allow sale of cannabis. But along with that is, you know, we have to look at, that is a state law, people will be buying it. They will be, if we don't sell it, if we don't allow selling it, someone else is going to be selling it to them, and they will be bringing it into the city of DeKalb. We don't, we won't be collecting any tax on it, it'll be more of a burden on our fire and police. And if we can, you know, it's, it's a catch-22 on, on what you want to do, but I'd rather have a control on it than, and be able to tax it. And when they say a three percent tax, if we raise our tax too high, does that mean dispensaries won't come here? But then again, you look at it, and it's what's, a hundred-dollar purchase on marijuana with three dollars additional on it, too.
Right.
You know, if you look at it, they're not going to drive to another town to get that. So that's my feeling.
Okay. Any other, any other thoughts? Alderman McAdams.
Well, I have been pretty vocal on this subject from the onset during my campaign and when I got elected. I think we should go forward with it. I think we should charge the full three percent. I believe that other states have done the same thing, and the time to strike is right at the beginning. That's where the money can be made. And we need the revenue in the city more than any other city in the area. We are not running a surplus, we're running a deficit, and I, I've heard nothing but positive support for it so far.
Thank you. Alderman Morris, and then Alderman Fanoukis.
I, I can't agree more. So basically, yeah, I, I agree very much so with what Dwayne Brown had said when he spoke, that we really should just take a look at the state guideline, try not to regulate as much as possible, so that we can be as competitive as possible with the surrounding areas. You know, let's capitalize on it, and let's be competitive. So, yeah, and I think just as, as the Alderman just noted, three dollars on a hundred-dollar purchase is really not that big of a deal, so I think a three percent tax isn't, no one's going to be choosing where they go based on the taxes. And I think it's all the more exciting, I hadn't realized until I saw all these different listed types of establishments, you know, we could have some really substantial businesses here. We're not just talking dispensaries, we're talking about facilities that could be in production, that could bring significant number of jobs to our community, which is really exciting to me. So I think that we need to make sure that we are as welcoming as humanly possible to these companies.
Thank you. Alderman Fanoukis.
You know, with the, the state act authorizing up to five hundred dispensaries, I would think that our odds of getting at least one here are, are pretty good. I would imagine, though, they will concentrate around the more major metropolitan areas, but, you know, they're not going to pop up in every small town, so like, we may be a good point in between, say, Rockford and Chicago, or Chicago and the Quads, for a dispensary to be here. And as Alderman Morris just mentioned, the other opportunities for jobs present some interesting concepts, so.
Thank you. Alderman Verbic.
And we do have some of the best soil in the nation for growing agriculture, so I, I think that I would agree with my colleagues and support them. I would, though, like to hear as efficiently as possible from our committees and commissions, from a standpoint of, you know, all of the factors, Mr. Brown, excellent point, do you dedicate some of that revenue to pay down on our pension obligations? Great idea. But I think that our, our committees could have some good advice. We, we will be looking at people, you know, based on legislation that will be released from prison, for example. How do we help them get acclimated back into the community, getting employed? So I think that there's, there's more things to look at here than just saying yes. I think we're, we're doing a great job of looking at this early.
Any other thoughts? Yes, Alderman Smith.
I guess I have one question, it's probably for Chief Petrogao. John, what do you, has Illinois chiefs come out with projections on enforcement, or from a statewide aspect of these coming in place into towns? Have they done anything yet? Maybe not, it might be too early. Hate to put you on the spot.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a little bit early for that. They are responsible for getting things into place for the other municipalities' law enforcement agencies. So I, I think that they're, they're waiting, like everyone else, for the amendments to come out, probably in late fall, and then we'll know a lot more.
I know you have a, probably one of the bigger enforcements, and that's, I just noticed a spung of, I, I know thousands of records, that's going to be quite a challenge.
Yeah, that'll be quite a task.
So, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, here, seeing no other comments at this point, I think the consensus, Bill, is that we, that this council feels strongly that we should move ahead with the possibility of, of doing what it is that we can to keep ahead of, of others who are looking to set up dispensaries, medical marijuana and/or recreational. Is that a, is that a clear submission of where we are?
I hear it clearly, and I think it's a good idea also to ask some of our, our commissions and committees. Before we do that, I think I will bring this back, if it's okay with you, so we can begin to narrow down some of the parameters, and then serve that up to the people who are set up to advise you on such matters, if that's okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, I appreciate the participation of Okay, well, I appreciate the participation of our speakers tonight, our city council. I think we've gotten a pretty good update on where we need to be and where we'd like to go with the website, and the fact that we, there's still plenty of discussion remaining in this community on the adult use of cannabis. Those are the two items under consideration for our committee of the whole meeting. I would entertain a motion to adjourn, and then we will move forward in a few minutes with our full city council meeting. Second? It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Smith, that we adjourn this committee of the whole meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So move. We are adjourned. We will begin city council meeting at 6:00. Thank you.